Hey, everyone. Today is May 2nd. The time is 6:00 PM. And this is the Akushna Planning Committee. This meeting is being recorded for future viewing on the town's YouTube channel, for the cable channel, and we are also live via Zoom tonight. Can I get a motion to open the planning board meeting?
Motion to open the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Fabulous. Can we all introduce ourselves?
Peter Gaya, a member.
Steve Boucher, a member.
Mike Francois, chairman.
Brian DeChamps, a member.
Rick Ellis, vice chairman.
Good. All right, let's get some meeting minutes out of the way. Did we all have an opportunity to look at the April 18th? Rick and myself were absent on this meeting. Do you gentlemen, do you three have an opportunity to read this over? Did you find any issues?
I make a motion to accept the minutes from April 18th.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, actually last week, April 25th, meeting minutes, Rick and Steve were absent. Myself, Brian, and Peter were here. I read through this. I didn't see any issues. Like we've said in the past, Paul, and now Haley is starting to take over the minutes, and Paul's been training Haley, and they're both doing a really good job on the minutes. Questions, comments?
I make a motion to accept the minutes from April 25th, 2024.
I'll second.
All in favor? Okay. Moving right along. Correspondent, Serp Ed Commission Member Appointment. We have, normally when there's a town planner, the town planner is the town representative, the town planner and the town administrator, Jamie Kelly, is also a representative to Serp Ed. But because we don't have a town planner at the moment, we have appointed one of the board members to be a representative of the town for Serp Ed. Last year, I think it was, or sometime last year, we nominated Steve Boucher as the point person to represent the town for Serp Ed. Is Steve willing to continue these duties?
I'll continue the duties until such time we get a town planner.
The duties are from May 31st, 2024, through June 1st, 2025, or until a town planner is appointed. Can I get a motion to nominate Steve Boucher as the Serp Ed representative for the planning board of the Town of Akushna?
A motion to nominate Steve Boucher.
I got a motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for your service. I'll sign this and fill this out again. All right, moving right along. Can I get a motion to open the public hearing portion of this meeting?
I make a motion to open the public hearing.
Got a motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so first, I have to announce that I am invoking the Mullins Law, Mass. General Law 39, Section 23D. Basically, what the Mullins Law is, I wasn't at last week's meeting, so basically, the Mullins Law is stating that I watched the video on TV. I read up and looked at all the most current plans, and I am up to speed on the Keen Road project. So I have signed that, and I will be turning that in. So that is on record. Form C 2023-01, proposed subdivision of land 39 Keen Road, Form C definitive subdivision owned by AMN Estate Holding LLC applicant. The engineer is Farland Corp. of Fairhaven, Mass. This proposal is for a six-lot subdivision on a single-access street. The plans and accompanying documentation are available for inspection at Town Clerk's Office, Partingways Building, 130 Main Street, first floor during regular business hours. The applicant has revised plans based on inputs and comments in the planning board and the public from the public hearing on January 25th. The latest plan version is dated March 25th, 2024. The latest stormwater report revision is March 25th, 2024. Like I said, I watched the video. Brian here ran the meeting. I thought everything went well. I thought that all the changes and updates that Farland did were, and that were good and that we had requested. But because we do not have a town planner at the moment, and none of us on this board are licensed engineers, I am requesting that the set of plans not only go for stormwater peer review, but I want them to go for peer review for the planning board as well, just to make sure it meets all standards, codes, bylaws, setbacks, and everything else that we might miss. So we've already been in contact with conservation. They're already in contact with an engineering company. We're gonna put a set of plans, both peer reviews go to the same engineering firm, so they do everything all in one shot. And then the engineering firm will come back with their notes and comments, and then we'll go back in front of Farland. Farland will come back in front of us and make necessary changes.
Yeah, I mean, that's in line with past practice. Every time we've had a definitive subdivision, it's been referred to for peer review.
It has?
Yeah.
Okay. Even when you had a town planner, did you still end up sending it out?
Yep, absolutely. Absolutely. Because, I mean, even with a planner, you couldn't expect them to look at some of the more technical part of the proposal, including stormwater, which we, even though there's a stormwater entity now, I mean, that's still part of our purview, is to look at how the drainage is being handled.
So last meeting, the last meeting, the public hearing was continued to this meeting. I would like to make a motion to continue the public hearing portion till June 20th. It gives them approximately two months to get peer review done. If it gets done by then, then great. If not, then we'll continue it. And I'd also like to make a motion to send the plans to peer review for planning and storm.
So it's going to go to the same?
Same engineering firm.
Same engineering.
Yes.
So the costs will be absorbed by the opponent.
Correct.
Which you're doing two at the same time, so they should be getting a?
A good and a bad deal.
Should be getting a better deal, yeah.
Yeah.
At least we're not having two separate engineering firms revert, you know, looking at stormwater. Yeah. I mean, that's a?
Yeah.
Would be a little overkill.
Yeah. And the timing might be better as well if you have one person doing it instead of two separate firms. So I entertain a motion.
I would, well, I would second the chair's motion to refer the subdivision for peer review for technical aspects of the subdivision control laws and stormwater.
We have a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And just for the record as well, can I get a motion to continue this public hearing until June 20th at 6:00 PM?
I would also think I would make the motion, or second the motion, to refer to June?
16? 20th.
20th, June 20th.
6:00 PM.
That would give it all time.
Have a motion. Got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to go out of public hearing, back into regular meetings?
So moved.
Thank you very much. Second that?
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Moving right along. This is a new one. Oh, all in favor? I forget that one. Thank you.
Yeah, aye.
Everybody's in favor. This is a new one for me. Proposed discontinuance of Beacon Street. It's a paper street. You all have a little map there.
Yep.
I actually just took a drive down, so nobody's, if not everybody's sure exactly where Pageot, I'm hoping I'm pronouncing that right, P-A-G-E-O-T-T-E, Pageot Street. If not everybody's aware of where Pageot Street is, you go down Wing Road until the corner where Wing Lane is. You know where the solar farm is?
Yeah.
Right before you get to the solar farm, it's that right, back there.
Is that where this is? This is Nelson Avenue, Cushman Street, so this is actually right up in the back over here. You can get it right off James, too. But it only goes like 500 feet down, and then it ends, because everybody built their houses, as I know, at Cushman. And once you build a house, you have to put the street in. And what happened is everybody built on Cushman and built on Barsley on each side, so there's nobody to build down Pageot. They know it, you know? Yeah, it's like you go down Pageot, and it stops, and it continues on the other side.
Right. Right, yeah. Okay, so this was a new one for me. This is never, removal of paper streets never come in front of me before. So I did some poking around, some asking around, and I spoke to the assessors, and then I went and spoke to, well, Paul went and spoke to the building inspector, Andy Babola, and he's, he was more familiar about the process. So Mr. Baptiste, could you just please introduce yourself for the record?
Hi, my name is Robert Baptiste, and I own the land that abuts all three sides of Beacon Street.
Okay. So Mr. Baptiste owns all of it. Inside, there are no other butters to Beacon Street. So I went to, Paul with the building inspector, and he came out with a few things. So first, we're gonna need two separate real estate appraisals of that portion of property. Two separate real estate appraisals of that portion of property, of Beacon Street. We need an accurate deed of Beacon Street. And then you need to petition the Board of Selectmen for removal of Beacon Street. Once it's gone through the Board of Selectmen, then it has to go in front of the town at the town meeting, and it has to be petitioned to the town and voted upon at the town meeting. Now, just to, and again, this is new to me, and I'm not sure if it's?
You know, I've done a few of them in the past, but it's been so long that I don't really remember what the procedure is.
Yeah, to kind of cover the town's butt, it's cover this board's butt, I'm gonna send this to Town Council to get a little bit better perspective of what exactly needs to be done. So what I just read to you is information that the planning board obtained from the town, the assessor's office and the building inspector. Not saying they're right or wrong, but that's the information they gave us. So just to confirm what they said, and just to make sure you don't have to jump through any hoops that you don't necessarily have to jump through, let me go to Town Council. He'll get back to me on exactly what needs to get done, and then I'll have Paul or Haley, the clerk, reach out to you with the exact procedure of what needs to get done.
Yeah, because, you know, this is, because I've got another end of Nelson Avenue that goes into my property also, and there was a man here that was in the executive board, and he left to go to another town, but he was trying to dissolve some of these paper streets that's never gonna be there, either due to, you know, wetlands, or just never gonna be put in, and people are using them for yachts, and even one built a garage on it. So he was going through that process, but then he left the town. And then I heard from a lady that watches all the town meetings, and she told me that they're gonna start dissolving the streets, otherwise I wouldn't have bothered, because I'm taking care of it anyway. I'm in between everything.
That's where I think you won't have much of an issue, because there aren't any butters. Usually when there's issues is when you're on one side.
When you have butters. So each butter on each side would probably, most of the time, would assume to the middle, the center line of the paper street.
Yes, my lawyer told me that.
Right, but I can see that you do have, the town has to, at town meeting, say that they're gonna dissolve that stream.
They call it abandonment in the law. I got a copy of Massachusetts law on paper streets. It's five papers, and I gave it to the assessor's office. She's got a copy if you wanna look at it. You know, even on a paper street, you know, they say there are butters, which is at the length, not at the end of a paper street. Have the rights, anything that's gonna be changed. And they're talking about the paper street, because it is there, it's fixed, it's in writing. You know, it's there. It's just not put in. So this, you know, I've been reading all the laws, and it says that, you know, like I'm in a butter, and you're in a butter, and you wanna put a road through there. I think I gotta, you know, put a road through is okay, because that's there, but to add to it, I would have some kind of say, you know, because that's what made me look at them streets, is I'd like to know what my rights are as in a butter. Now, if you wanna put a house back there, you get the end of the street, it says in the laws that they don't have no rights, people to the end of the street. But like I said, it's also, you need to be a lawyer to really read these things.
Exactly. You need to be a lawyer, and then there's all kinds of, you know, if there are people that have landlocked pieces of property in the area that would possibly use that to access theirs in any way, shape, or form, this has to be, you know, again, just the Ts need to be crossed, Is need to be dotted, and make sure everything is done the proper way.
I agree with that.
I just can't say, yep, jaws.
No, I know. I just thought it'd be a good idea, so that way, if Pageot ever came through, that's gonna be the only access this town, I'll let you know, to the other side besides Wing Lane. Because Barsley is not going through, there's a person that owns a piece up there, and the house that was just built there just took the whole paper street and made a yacht out of it. So I don't think Barsley Street will ever make it, even though that's closer to?
So what's on the other side of Pageot? Turns private, what's on the other, does it turn into another street through the woods? Or is that?
No, if you put Pageot in, it would go right through from James Street all the way, all the way to Wing Road.
Oh, so James Street would connect into Pageot?
No, James Street, Pageot is, here's Pageot, James Street is over here, okay? So this, it's basically, it's gonna run through.
What's on this side?
That's where, there's woods, or whatever there is in between the, if I remember correctly. My little map there is showing it, it ain't showing where my land is, because it's all woods. Even the, everything is woods there. And like I said, unless somebody builds a house in there, and from what I understand, it's too wet in the middle of there. You could put a road through there, probably, you know, the town. But ought to build there, it would be a problem, and I don't think any of my houses are gonna be going in there. Otherwise, I would keep it, because then if my back lot was buildable, because if you look, see the big lot I got in the back?
That's my next question.
Yeah, that's an acre and a quarter. But from what I understand, it's too wet, even though my neighbor in back of that wants to put a house there, and I don't understand that one.
Well, you might be within the, you, you know, you might just wanna think about it a little bit. It depends on what you wanna do.
Because something might be buildable, it's a little more land.
Exactly, you're in a village area, so you have sewer up there, so things change a little bit.
That area is not in the village, I wish it was.
Oh, it's just outside of it?
Right there. My one lot I got there, which is right at the end there, I would have to show it to you, because they made the black lines for it.
The one over here, there's 514 on this side?
Yeah, one of the top, it's all one big, one big piece now.
Okay.
The assessor, you know, put two other lots together, they put all of them together, but that one little lot up there is actually in the village, where I could put a house. That's where I would like to put my house.
I think it's a good idea.
But he said this line here, so he owns both of these.
Right, but I think this is the one he's talking about. That's in the village.
Yeah, it's 142 by 72 in the front.
Yeah, yeah, off of Nelson Avenue.
Off Cushman, at the end of Cushman.
Between Cushman and Nelson.
Yes, that's it.
Yeah.
That's the original lot I bought, and that was, and I got a paper from the last building inspector, and he says it meets all the regulations, that lot there.
Okay, so why do you, why do you want to discontinue, I take it, Beacon Street in its entirety?
Yeah, well, the reason why was because it would attach that, the other one on the other side, and someday that could become buildable. It doesn't meet the requirements, because like I said, it's not in the village, so it has to be 150 feet frontage, and all the other requirements it meets, you could put a house on the other side, where you were. Your fence is my fence. You could put a house in there, but it doesn't have the, it's a acre and a half, a acre and a third, I believe now, and it's only three quarters of an acre. So that, you know, so if I got that, someday if I had to, I would, I don't want to, because I like the woods, I like the animals. Okay? If I had to sell that someday, I figure I could put them both together if I wanted, if I had to. That's why I wanted to keep it separate. And Beacon Street wouldn't be, you know, in the way, I'd say.
Yeah, yeah.
But he's right, too, you know, Beacon Street, that's also 150-foot frontage there, on Beacon to that other little lot. If they change the rules, or like they did on the end of Penbrook, they made it part of the village.
Yeah.
Then some of them lots would become buildable if you could do it, you know, with the wet in there, you know?
Right.
But I kinda thought maybe it would be, you know, right in that area where Beacon is, because there is, you know, it's what they call a dry stream. It runs through there, I get all the runoff from everybody, comes down, and then it comes into the middle, and it comes down to me, and then it comes down to a little runoff that goes all the way in the back of that property of mine's, and it goes all the way back, and it goes towards the solar panels?
Yeah.
And their property. And then I don't know where it goes after that, goes into the woods, and it dissipates. But right now, it's still a little wet there, but three weeks from now, you could drive anywhere on that property. It'd be solid as a rock.
I was down there, I was right at the very end here, and Pageot ends here, and this house right here. And this house here. So this is all the wooded area that we're talking about here. This house here is this house.
Yep.
And where it says Baptiste here, and all these wooded, this whole wooded area here. That's the end of Pageot right there.
It's ultimately up to the?
Yeah, yeah. This is, I mean, like I said, I don't think we have, I don't think we have much say.
They said it was the town administrator, he told me to go to the planning board first, so I, actually, to give you a better idea, from just trying to tell you what I wanted to do, I got a surveyor, which I thought is crazy, pay a surveyor and then go?
No, you're really, it's not gonna be a waste, because this is proving that you're the only butter.
Okay.
This is not a waste of money, this is gonna go a long ways, whether you go in front of the selectmen or whoever you go in front of, this is proven that a certified surveyor surveyed the land, and that nobody else abuts that street, so it's not, that's not a waste.
They've got a landlock.
It's worth it, right?
Yeah, it was worth, you're doing that.
You know, I thought of what he said, you know, maybe you don't wanna get rid of it, because someday my back lot might be buildable back there, but I don't know, you know, I'm not an engineer.
Right.
Well, the end of the street is not frontage. So the end of Beacon Street, that doesn't constitute frontage.
Not at the end, no.
No. And as, as, the same goes for Cushman and Nelson. You know, the end of those streets, there, that's not frontage.
Well, if you were building a house, I think, if you were building a house, and that was part of your property, and it came like this, the end of the street, at an L, that could be considered your frontage also.
Again, if it's just the end of the street, that's not?
No.
That's not considered as frontage.
No. No, because that's what the law says, and I read. And like I said, if anybody's really interested, she'll give you a copy of the Massachusetts state laws, and it says anybody at the end has no rights, and then anything done on a paper street, if you are?
You have the right to access your property via the end of Nelson, via the end of Cushman, via the end of Beacon.
Yes.
But that doesn't constitute frontage towards a building lot.
Right.
But certainly, you are entitled to access it.
Through there.
And that's one of the considerations in discontinuance of a street, is if the town discontinues the street, and there is another butter who feels that you've taken away some of his frontage or his access, he actually, or she, they can actually sue the town for discontinuing the street.
Well, that's, the only reason, what I'm talking about there is a whole different thing than what I'm looking at. It's, I'm talking about Maile, they wanted to put a house back there two years ago, they perked it, and I'm saying, help divide the property up and give somebody else access to a paper street, even though they add to the street. And that was my whole purpose, I'm looking up paper streets. You know, and I ain't a lawyer, so I couldn't tell you, but it says that they don't have a right.
I mean, as much as I don't wanna make work for anybody, the best way for you to make sure that you get what you want out of this discontinuance is to get a lawyer. And he'll, he will guide the process.
I have heard, but?
But he will guide, he or she will guide the process so that it gets done properly, and you get what you want out of the discontinuance.
Okay.
That's, that's the most assured way that you will get what you want.
So I will send this to our town council, and get the best course of action for us and for you, and then?
Let me know what I gotta do.
I'll get back to you, I'll have Paul and Haley get back to you, and let you know what the process is.
All right, great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Have a great day.
You too.
Have a good weekend.
Okay. In the meantime, I'll see if I can watch the last meeting that the subdivision went to.
Yep.
Obviously, there were some things that happened there, so.
Yeah, if you watch that, and then you go to Pam, she will fill this, you sign this little piece of paper right here, saying that you saw everything, you're up to speed, and that kind of covers our butted.
Yeah.
And then you can vote on anything in the future.
Where did you, where did you watch it?
Right on YouTube. Just go right on YouTube, put in Town of Akushna, and they're all there.
Okay.
Or you can vote in Town of Akushna Planning Board, and then everything comes up.
Okay, super. Oh, she left. As I recall, and it's been years at this point, and my memory is nowhere near as good as it used to be, they, you're right, they petition, they have to petition the selectmen to discontinue the street in its entirety. the selectmen to discontinue the street in its entirety or a portion of it. And there has to be a written description of what is going to be discontinued, what they're, what he wants to have discontinued. And then usually the, so, as I recall, the selectmen refer it to the planning board for their, for their input. And ultimately, it has to happen at town meeting.
Yep.
I mean, the ones that I've seen, that I've been associated with in the past, I mean, if the selectmen don't have a problem with it, the planning board doesn't have a problem with it generally.
Yeah, and because there aren't any abutters, I don't see, I mean, it dead, dead ends into his property anyways, if he's on both sides.
It's all formality really after that.
Yeah, it's all formality. Yeah. So we'll, we'll get town council to, uh, chime in, and, uh, is there anybody out in Zoom that would like to add anything to today's meeting? Okay. Still moving along, uh, town planner, nothing, long range planning, nothing, uh, nothing else came in within the last forty-eight hours. Our next meeting is Thursday, May sixteenth. Does anybody on the board have anything they'd like to discuss or bring up with to talk about? I entertain a motion?
A motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good night.